Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the R A S C Edmonton Center. I'd like to acknowledge that we're on Treaty Six land, which is the traditional land, so First Nations and Métis people. And I think we can start with Sukrit, if you're able to begin with the with the minutes of the last meeting, that would be great.
Yes, the minutes of the meeting have been posted to the OneDrive for November 8, 2021. I understand there was, I may have missed the astro-imaging corner number. So I will be fixing that, but other than that, are there any errors or omissions?
Sukrit, I sent you a note, the the date of the meeting is not correct.
Oh, okay, awesome, I will make that change, I'll make a make a note over here, make that change. And then I guess we'll come, do we come back to approving it then, making a motion to approve it?
If there's no other changes, you can make a motion to approve it with the with the changes.
Okay, can I, I would like to make a motion to approve it with the changes of the date and the astro-imaging corner number.
Is there a seconder?
Under seconds.
Under, all right, any further discussion? All in favor, you can say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, carried. So now we're gonna go to, where are you, Jeff? Looking for you, oh, there you are, okay, I'm gonna make you a co-host.
Okay.
Yes, I do. And we're gonna have Jeff with his what's up tonight? Or no, news from space.
News from space.
Thank you.
What's up is something I do on Wednesday, so.
That's right.
All right.
Liftoff for the James Webb Space Telescope was delayed from December 18th to December 22nd. The space telescope, a next-generation instrument said to be the most powerful observational tool ever put into space, has been a long time coming, with development beginning in 1996. Webb has been completed, folded up, and transported by sea to its launch site, Europe Spaceport in French Guiana. However, a recent incident during launch preparations forced the mission teams to delay the liftoff a few extra days. According to a statement from NASA, during operations, technicians were preparing to attach Webb to the launch vehicle adapter, which is used to integrate the observatory with the upper stage of the Ariane-5 rocket. A sudden, unplanned release of a clamp band, which secures Webb to the launch vehicle adapter, caused a vibration throughout the observatory. Following the incident, a NASA Land Review Board investigated and instituted additional testing to determine with certainty that the incident did not damage the telescope. If there are no further delays, the James Webb Telescope will be in space before Christmas. After a month in safe mode, NASA has announced that the Hubble Space Telescope has almost returned to full science operations. Hubble, which has been in space for over 31 years, went into safe mode following its second shutdown of the year. The famous telescope entered safe mode on October 25th after a loss of data synchronization was detected. The Hubble team went to work to isolate the problem. This included changes to instrument flight software. The Hubble team successfully recovered the Advanced Camera for Surveys instrument on November 7th. The Wide Field Camera 3 instrument, which represents more than a third of the spacecraft's observing time, was recovered on November 21st. The Cosmic Origin Spectograph instrument was back online on the 28th of November. Controllers hope to bring the last instrument, the Space Telescope Imaging Spectograph, online early in December. The team will continue work on developing and testing changes to instrument software that would allow them to conduct science operations even if they encounter several lost synchronization messages in the future. Despite announcing earlier this year that they would leave the ISS program in 2024 to build their own space station, Russia's Prichel docking module linked up with the International Space Station November 26th. The docking module is the final planned piece of the Russian segment of the outpost and will provide a new connection for future crew and cargo ships. The propulsion module from a modified Progress supply ship guided the Prichel module on a two-day pursuit of the space station culminating in an automated docking. The spherical ball-shaped docking node, which has six docking ports, launched November 24th. It attached to the Naoka multipurpose lab on the bottom of the space station's Russian segment. Naoka was launched in July. There were departures then arrivals of SpaceX Crew Dragon craft in November. The SpaceX Crew 2, riding in the ship Endeavour, departed the ISS November 8th and splashed down in the Gulf of Mexico. The mission set a record for the longest spaceflight by a U S crude spacecraft. The International Crew 4 spent 199 days in orbit, surpassing the 168 days set by NASA's SpaceX Crew 1 mission earlier this year. On November 11th, SpaceX Crew 3, in the ship Endurance, arrived at the International Space Station. Due to weather delays and a minor health problem with one of the SpaceX Crew 3 members, NASA decided to bring home the Crew 2 astronauts from the ISS before launching Crew 3, thus being the first Crew Dragon indirect handover of Space Station crews. The Shenzhou 13 astronauts aboard the Chinese space station took the first spacewalk of their mission on November 7th, marking the country's first spacewalk by a female astronaut. The three crew members, consisting of Commander Shai Xiaogang, Wang Yaping, and Yi Gengfu, arrived at the Changhe Space Station on October 15th. Commander Xiaogang and colleague Wang Yaping exited the Changhe core module for a 6.5-hour EVA. They worked installing equipment, testing the station's robot arm, and making the station ready for the arrival of future modules. Changhe is the first modular space station to be launched by China. On November 15th, Russia carried out a test of an anti-satellite weapon, or ASAT. The target was the long-dead Cosmos 1408, a Soviet-era surveillance satellite in orbit since 1982. The test created a debris cloud in a polar orbit that ranged from 300 to 1100 kilometers above the Earth, with the bulk of the debris between 400 and 450 kilometers above the Earth. Criticism of the test and the resulting debris cloud was swift and universal.
The test has so far generated over 1,500 pieces of trackable orbitable debris and hundreds of thousands of pieces of smaller orbital debris that now threaten the interests of all nations.
Russian, American, and international astronauts aboard the International Space Station, which orbits at 400 kilometers, were ordered to their spacecraft in case an emergency exit was required. The tension in the controllers' and astronauts' voices was noticeable.
Hey Mark, good morning, sorry for the early call. We were recently informed of a satellite breakup and need to have you guys start reviewing the safe haven procedure, it's nine decimal two one. We are planning on performing through Block 8, which will include closing the radial hatches. The time of concern is 0600.
Copy, nine decimal two one, we're looking at executing that through step eight and including closing the lateral hatches and time of concern is 0600. Okay.
The concern of these events is that the debris could set off a cascading number of collisions known as a Kessler syndrome, as shown in the 2013 movie Gravity, which would make low Earth orbit unreachable for years. In the meantime, spacecraft will have to dodge debris for the foreseeable future. The Double Asteroid Redirection Test Mission, or DART, was successfully launched November 24th on a SpaceX Falcon 9 rocket. DART is a planetary defense test of technologies for preventing an impact of Earth by a hazardous asteroid. DART will head for the dual near-Earth asteroid Didomos and deliberately crash into Dimorphos, a small companion asteroid to the larger one. The mission will assess the future potential of a spacecraft impact to deflect an asteroid from a collision course with Earth through a transference of momentum. The impact event is slated for September 26th, 2022. With the Falcon 9 rocket's job done, DART was sent on its way. It will use a zeon-fueled ion-electric engine to maneuver toward its target. Prior to impact, DART will eject a small Italian-built CubeSat that will monitor and image the impact. Earth-bound instruments will also monitor the effect of the impact. It's estimated that the impact of the 500-kilogram dart at 6.6 kilometers per second will produce a velocity change on the order of 0.4 millimeters per second. This seems a small change in trajectory of the asteroid, but over time, it will lead to a large shift of the asteroid's path. If it succeeds, it will demonstrate a practical planetary defense system that could, with enough warning, deflect a dangerous asteroid away from the Earth. This reporter thinks this plan has more merit than the plan the dinosaurs had to save themselves.
And there you go.
Bravo.
Funny video. Cool, thank you.
Well done.
Way to go, Walter Winchell.
Attaboy, Walter.
I think we're gonna retire old Walter for a while.
Oh, come on, come on, he's just getting started, he's just getting in his, finding his voice. Only if you change it to Elmer Fudd.
Well, I don't know if I can do that.
Okay, awesome, thanks very much, Jeff. So I'm gonna turn it over now to Sharon to introduce our guest speaker, Dr. Morsink.
Yeah, thank you so much. It gives me great pleasure to welcome Patrick Kotay to give the guest talk today. Patrick is an observational astronomer and a principal research officer at the National Research Council's Hertzberg Institute for Astronomy, which is located in Victoria. His research specialization is the study of galaxies and clusters of galaxies. He makes use of most of the world's major telescopes in order to understand the properties of galaxies and how they evolve. Today, he'll be showing us the latest results from an ambitious survey of the Virgo cluster of galaxies. And, and I'm just gonna say, if if people have questions during the talk, we can, you can put them in the chat and we can, if you don't mind, Patrick, we can just let you know that there's a question, or we'll just wait till the end.
Yeah, either way, I'm happy to take questions as I go through the talk, that can be quite nice, so I'm happy to do that, or wait till the end, anyway. So I guess I'll get started, thank you very much for the invitation and the opportunity to speak. What I'll try to do, I really enjoyed that video, by the way, I learned quite a few things, that was very good. I was gonna take the next 45 minutes or so and tell you a little bit about some work that I've been involved in on trying to understand the properties of galaxies, in particular, extreme galaxies. And doing this, what I'm doing is using telescopes mainly in Hawaii, the Canada-France Hawaii Telescope, to look at the Virgo cluster and try and identify unusual galaxies in that very famous environment. Okay, so in this talk, I'll start off with a bit of an introduction. Sharon gave a bit of an introduction, but I'll spend a moment or two just to add some details to my path to being astronomer here in Victoria. Then I'll set the stage by talking about what we, a very broad overview of cosmic structure formation and how galaxies form and evolve, and then tell you about this this survey, the Next Generation Virgo Cluster Survey, or NGBS, and then delve down to look at some of the extreme galaxies that we're finding in this survey. And then I want to look ahead, it's always fun to, you know, to look ahead, and this is a nice follow-up to the video that we just had. And I'm gonna talk about the James Webb Space Telescope, one program that is related to this science topic that I'll tell you about tonight. And then, on longer timescales, a project Castor that you may or may not have heard about, but this is actually a proposed Canadian flagship astronomy telescope that I've been working on for a number of years. And then we can have questions or discussions. And again, if you prefer to ask questions during the talk, then that's fine, too. Okay, so a bit about my background, so I hail from Ontario originally, and I was, did my undergraduate at Western University, and then I was, did all my graduate work at McMaster in Hamilton, before coming in 94 to Victoria, where I worked at here, where I am now, at the National Research Council. Then I went for a postdoc at Caltech in the late 1990s, which is a really great time, because that was when the Keck telescopes were first coming online. And then I was four years in New Jersey at Rutgers University as a professor in the Physics and Astronomy Department there. And in 2004, I came back to Canada to take up a position as an astronomer here in our scene in Victoria. And incidentally, back in 1985, I was a summer student, and I worked at what was then the Edmonton Space Sciences Centre, now the Telesworld of Science. And my job there was, in the afternoons and in the evenings, I would man the observatory outside. In fact, I think I saw Alan Dyer on the call, Alan hired me in 1985. And so, yeah, so I was on clear days, I was out on the observatory deck, and then if the weather was was not clear, then I would be inside as a science interpreter in the science center, which was great fun. Okay, so a little bit about my background, so as Sharon said, I'm I'm observational astronomer, I'm interested in nearby galaxies, star clusters, the Milky Way, et cetera. And in my my wavelength, preferred wavelength region, so to speak, is the ultraviolet optical and the infrared region. And I use telescopes on the ground and in space, mainly Hubble in space and CFHD, Canada-France wide telescope on the ground, and I'll be telling you about the surveys with CFHD that we're doing. Back, we heard in the video a moment ago about the ACS instrument being repaired as Hubble came out of its second safe mode this year. ACS was a brand-new instrument, I had one of the three large programs that was approved in that first cycle with HST nearly 20 years ago, and this was a study of the Virgo cluster, which led into the study that we'll see tonight. Okay, so to take a step back and sort of set the stage, you've probably seen diagrams like this before. So this is basically an illustration of the growth of cosmic structure. With, over on the extreme left, we have the Big Bang, and at very early times, going back to Planck time, we have a very early universe that undergoes cosmic inflation. And then you have recombination into a point of 300,000 years after the Big Bang, where we see the cosmic microwave background, you've probably seen pictures like this before, so this is a microwave view of the universe, very smooth and isotropic, although it doesn't really look it in this this particular picture, but those fluctuations are actually very, very small, very hard to discern. But it's those fluctuations that you can use to sort of build a picture along with measurements of the the universes, the properties of the universe at subsequent times, to build up a picture of, you know, the standard model of the universe in which we're dominated by dark energy and dark matter, and then there's a small fraction of baryons, which is the regular matter that we know and love. And those observations of the early universe and our theories allow us to make predictions about at late times, so 13.7 billion years after the Big Bang, what the universe should look like. Those small seeds of, you know, small fluctuations, early on in the universe, eventually grew through gravity to form the galaxies that we see today. And so, the theorists who run these cosmological simulations and make these these models like to compare to data, of course, and so here's such a comparison, this is from a very famous set of simulations, the Millennium Simulation by Volker Springer and collaborators back in 2005. And so you're seeing several wedge diagrams here, these are slices of the universe, so redshift along the radial axis, and then a slice along on the plane of the sky, along the arc. And so if you look at the red points, these are simulations in three different distance ranges, so from the nearby universe to the intermediate universe to the distant universe. Still very local, but you can see that the simulations, each dock is a simulated galaxy. And so the simulations predict a cosmic web of structures on different scales with sort of a honeycomb pattern and webs and filaments, et cetera. Now, if you compare to the, on the opposite side of the diagram, the blue points are actual observations from three famous surveys in increasing ranges of distance, so observations in blue, simulations in red, and if you compare the two, I think you agree, the simulations are doing a pretty fine job of reproducing the observed structure in the universe, so this is, this is all very good, it gives us some confidence that we understand how structures form and how galaxies form. Of course, there are always subtleties, and in our case, my case, I'm interested in galaxies mainly in the nearby universe, there are always complications, and in our case, what you find when you look on small spatial scales, that figure I just showed you are generally on large scales, large-scale structure of the universe. When you look on scales locally, on the scales of nearby galaxies or within our own Milky Way galaxy, you see that there are some problems or failings of the models, or at the very least incompleteness in the model. One such example of this is the so-called missing satellite problem, whereas if you look at the bottom of this panel here, you see that the figure on the left is one simulation where there's a central galaxy, and then there's a whole host, a swarm of small faint galaxies, low-mass galaxies or dwarf galaxies, in theory, that should be surrounding this larger galaxy. Now, if you look at the figure in the middle and on the right-hand side, these are examples of what we actually see in the observed universe, so for a large galaxy, when we go out and we take images and take spectra and count the number of satellite galaxies or dwarf galaxies, we certainly find, you know, a swarm of satellites around large galaxies, but nowhere near the profusion, not in the numbers that you would expect from the simulations. And so there's a few things that could be going on here, that could tell us that our our census is incomplete, that we need better data, we're missing galaxies for some reason, and quite a lot of effort has been spent over the last 15 or 20 years to tackle this problem. And it's true that, you know, as we get better data and deeper observations, you do find more satellites, but it still doesn't, it's not reconciled with the predictions of the models, so something is going on here. And of course, this is, you know, very tricky business. As a rule, when you make these cosmological simulations, you start with the dark matter, and the dark matter is somewhat easy, counterintuitively, it's somewhat easy to make predictions about the distribution of dark matter, because dark matter, although it's invisible, you can detect it through gravity, and it does have a gravitational force associated with it, and so to make predictions of dark matter, you really need to only understand gravity, and we think we understand gravity quite well. Whereas to make predictions about the galaxies, the galaxies are composed of baryons, which originally are in the form of gas, and the gas has to cool and collect inside these dark matter halos and then form stars, and then get, these stars get assembled into galaxies, and eventually perhaps a supermassive black hole can form in the center of the galaxy, and that can eject energy back into the galaxy and blow out the gas. Or alternatively, you can form supernovae, and the supernovae can have explosions, and that can blast out the gas as well, and that's what you're seeing on the right here, you see these explosions going off in map of the cube of the gas temperature. This is feedback, which is going to ultimately affect the appearance of the galaxies in a very critical way, and so to understand, you know, from the the early universe and the predictions and structure formation, to understand how galaxies appear, you need to understand gas physics, and that can be quite tricky, and there's a lot of uncertainties associated with that process. So I'm gonna skip ahead here and then go to the next slide, so as I was saying, the the gas physics is quite complicated, and it's, there are a number of ways in which you can complicated and it's, there are a number of ways in which you can change your predictions that can give you very different train changer model to give you very different predictions. So here's just one pretty picture showing the antennae, which is a major merger. And you can see that this has triggered the formation of stars in these blue clumps here. And so this is clearly, to understand what the, this galaxy will eventually look like, you're going to understand, have to understand how gas interacts to form stars and how the stars interact with the galaxy after the fact. Now, astronomers, back about twenty years ago, when the, this was recognized, first recognized but fully appreciated to be a significant source of uncertainty, astronomers started to make lists of different physical processes, conjecture that, you know, these were processes that could affect what galaxies look like, change their appearance, or prevent them from forming, or allowing them to disappear and to be destroyed. And they came up with all these different processes, which, as I look over the list here, you would think that the astronomers twenty years ago had some anger issues or something, because it all sounds very violent, these processes. But really, it's, all these are related to the process in which galaxies are transformed in shape. So if you, you know, zero in on, say, a couple of processes here, which are going to become important as I go forward, one is threshing. So what this means is that galaxies in a dense environment, say in a rich cluster of galaxies, have tidal interactions alter their shape and they can strip away the stars, you know, through tidal forces. And then eventually change the shape of that galaxy or cause it to disintegrate altogether. And you can see some of these processes at work. These galaxies in this simulation that I'm showing here are being threshed as you watch galaxies plunge through often on radial orbits. And sometimes if you look at the centre, you can see a number of smaller galaxies being eaten by the larger galaxy. And this is a process known as cannibalism. So it's a very dynamic environment, a rich cluster. And so these processes are at play and they can change the appearance of galaxies, even of the cluster itself. This is an actual image of a galaxy taken with the CFHD telescope in Hawaii. And this is, and the stretch has been chosen to enhance the very low surface brightness things. And you can see indeed the predictions of the simulations with these tidal tails and wisps and filaments are indeed found in real galaxies. Okay, so harassment is another process. In this one, you can transform a galaxy in morphological type. So we're all familiar with the so-called Hubble tuning fork, where you have a sample of galaxies that typically large, high mass galaxies that are often classified as giant elliptical galaxies or spiral galaxies, perhaps spiraled with bars in them or Magellanic type irregular galaxies that don't have a clear structure. What was recognized about twenty years ago is that in certain environments, you can actually have the gravitational effects of other galaxies or of the whole, the cluster as a whole in rich clusters transform the appearance of these galaxies. So you could in theory start out with a disk galaxy, a spiral galaxy that slowly gets transformed by this process into something that looks more like an elliptical galaxy. So to illustrate this process, let's look at these two galaxies. These are galaxies that are known members of the Virgo cluster, which I'll say more about in a moment. So this is based on imaging from two and a half meter telescope in the American Southwest. And this is only a fifty-three second exposure. So it's a very shallow exposure. And if you look at these objects, you think, okay, those are elliptical galaxies or something smooth, passively evolving galaxy, no clear structure to them. This is imaging taken with the Hubble Space Telescope of these same two galaxies. This is from that ACS program I mentioned earlier. So when we looked at these galaxies, you can see that they're not as smooth and featureless as you would have thought initially by looking at the ground based images. You can see that in fact, there looks to be the sign of faint spiral arms there. So these are images from Hubble. Now, if we look at images from CFHD, so now we're using a ground based telescope, which doesn't have the resolution of Hubble, of course. But it's very good, ground based telescopes have larger pixels and are often better at picking up very low surface brightness features, very diffuse features. And indeed, in this case, you can see now that even more obvious than any imaging from Hubble, you can see those spiral arms. And if we do some trips, tricks with with processing, in this case, we've, we've modeled the light of the galaxy and then subtracted it to give you a residual view of the residual image. This can enhance these very low surface brightness features and you can see the presence of spiral arms there. So this is, you know, evidence, prima facie evidence that in fact, this process is actually at play in clusters. And so we, as we look at galaxies locally, we have to be mindful of the fact that they potentially have been transformed from what they looked like initially. And then finally, there are some other processes that work directly on the gas in the galaxies, say spiral galaxies that may contain gas. The the cluster environment could actually change those, those galaxies as well. A famous one is ram pressure stripping. And so this is sort of easy to visualize. If you have a nice spiral galaxy like this, which contains young stars as well as old stars and has gas embedded in it. And that's the, the gas, of course, is the fuel for the next generation of stars. As that spiral galaxy falls into the cluster, the cluster, most of the baryonic mass in a cluster, the normal mass is in the form of hot X-ray gas that fills the entire cluster. And as the galaxy falls in, there's a pressure exerted on the gas inside the galaxy and it can sweep the gas out. So this is just an animation, it's not a proper simulation. It's just an animation to illustrate the effect. But if we look, and this is an image again from CFHD in Virgo. If you look at a galaxy like, like this, in fact, both of these galaxies show clear evidence for ram pressure strip. You can see these filaments of, of gas and even young stars in some cases in the gas being swept out of the galaxy as it falls through the cluster potential. So these are dynamic environments and it's very possible that galaxies have been transformed and have evolved in a, in some cases, some galaxies evolve very differently than others. So cluster is quite an interesting environment. It's a good place to look for galaxies of all types, of course, because rich clusters contain lots of galaxies. And just from a practical viewpoint, if you want to find galaxies, you know, what better place to look than in a rich cluster where there are many different galaxies, all clustered on the scale? So this brings us to the Virgo cluster. I've already showed some pictures of Virgo. Virgo, this crowd probably knows quite well, it's a spectacular cluster of galaxies, back to the rich cluster of galaxies nearest to the Milky Way. It's a distance of about fifty million light years or so, which is comparatively close. And it's by far the dominant concentration of mass in the local volume. So in this plot that I'm showing here, you can see the local group, which includes the Milky Way, of course, at the centre of this cylinder of the local volume. And if you look over at about three o'clock on the right, you see the Virgo cluster, this massive swarm of galaxies. And there are smaller clusters around as well, which are quite interesting to study. Foreign acts in the south, you see in the lower left hand corner is also quite interesting. But Virgo is, is a special environment because it is, as I said, the largest concentration of galaxies locally. So a number of years ago, my, my colleagues and I set out to do a new study of the Virgo cluster. Virgo had been mapped out in the nineteen eighties using photographic plates in, in its entirety. And that was an incredibly useful thing to do. We learned tremendous amount about Virgo, its galaxies. But we'd come to the conclusion that it needed a proper survey with wide field CCD detectors. And so we started a campaign over a decade now to use CFHD. CFHD has a very, at the time, it had the, the largest mosaic camera in existence among, on large telescopes. And it has a very large field of view, which is one degree by one degree. So in the view on the left, what I'm showing is Virgo in X-rays. So this is a view from the an X-ray satellite in the nineteen nineties, which looked at Virgo. And of course, in the X-rays, you essentially only see the hot gas filling the cluster potential. And the yellow crosses are the, just the Messier objects that happened to fall inside Virgo. So Messier, as you all know, is a comet hunter. And he made this catalog of over a hundred objects in the sky, which were some fuzzy, slightly resolved or slightly extended things. Well, almost a sixth of all his objects turned out to be in the constellation of Virgo. And that's was, of course, evidence that, you know, although he didn't know it at the time, that was because Virgo was the centre, has this very large cluster of galaxies. So this is just the tip of the iceberg though, for every one of these very high mass galaxies, there are many more intermediate and faint galaxies. But what we set out to do was make a thorough census of the galaxies in Virgo. And every one of those little red squares is the one degree field of CFHD. And for reference, you can see the Virgo the full moon down in the lower right hand corner. So this is about an area of about four hundred full moons. And we observe this area a hundred square degrees in five filters in the optical. We also did some infrared imaging as well. And so very deep, very uniform survey and also taken in exquisite seeing conditions from the ground. So it's not as good from, as from space, but it's still quite, quite excellent seeing from the ground. So before we started this, this survey, this was the census of galaxies known in the Virgo cluster. And so this is just a, you know, location on the, the plane of the sky. So you have right ascension running horizontally and declination vertically, of course. And the galaxies that are shown there, each one of those is a likely or confirmed member of the Virgo cluster. You can see that they're color coded. There, if you, I don't know if you can read it, but objects in blue, the, so that's a, the vertical bar, the color bar is showing the absolute magnitude. So very, very bright things are in blue or purple. And then average galaxy, average brightness is green and of course, very faint things in yellow, orange and red. So this was the census of galaxies at the time of the NGVS survey. And these arrows are showing, the blue arrows are showing along that color bar, the, the point at which previous surveys were complete. The lower one, lower arrow shows the completeness limit. By that, I mean, if a galaxy were present in Virgo down to that luminosity, it would have been found in previous surveys with a hundred percent completeness. And then the upper arrow shows the detection limit. So if a galaxy were fainter than that, then it would have gone completely unnoticed. So it would have been missed. So clearly, the detection rate for galaxies in between the arrows changes from a hundred percent to zero in that range. So when we observed with the NGVS and CFHD, this is the new census of galaxies. So you can see our completeness and detection limits are shown there. And one thing I want you to notice is, in addition to the many new galaxies that have been discovered here, is that most of them are yellow, orange or red. So that means that these are very low mass galaxies, which had been missed by previous surveys. And this is important for that problem that I mentioned earlier about the missing satellite problem. Because as we go deeper, as we get more complete, then we can identify how many dwarf galaxies, low mass galaxies there really are and make predictions against the cosmological models. So these are the galaxies that were known beforehand and the, the new additions that the NGVS contributed. So one of the things that you can do with, with this new dataset is you can ask the question, what are the typical sizes of galaxies? You know, what's a normal galaxy? What's an unusual galaxy? And so this is a very busy plot. I'll walk you through this. Once again, absolute magnitude is along the vertical axis. But now it's reversed, so that the very, very bright things are at the top of the diagram and the very, very faint things are at the bottom. This is a factor of several million in luminosity, if you prefer to work in luminosity units. And from left to right, there are five panels here. The first one is the, is a parameter which measures how concentrated the stars are in an individual galaxy. And then you have three different, three panels in the middle, central surface brightness, surface brightness at the effective radius. So that's a certain distance from the centre of the galaxy. And then an average surface brightness of the galaxy. So this is just basically the amount of light per unit area. And there's three different measures there, but they all measure how diffuse a galaxy is. And then finally, on the extreme right, there is a panel which is plotting the size, the effective radius. That's the radius that contains half of the total light of the galaxy. So that gives you a measure of how big the galaxy is. And all those previous galaxies in the Virgo cluster are shown as blue points. So what this allows you to do is, if you were to say, okay, I have a galaxy with an inch, I know its luminosity. What size would that galaxy be typically? You can just read it off this diagram. You know the average size of a galaxy of that luminosity. So with the NGVS, and here is a comparison, by the way, if we went to the local group, so in the Milky Way and in Andromeda and we found dwarf galaxies and we added them to the plot, they would look like this. So they seem to lie on the extension of their relation you see with Virgo at the bright end. Now, if we add in the NGVS detections, you can see you go extraordinarily far down the relation. And it gives you a very tight relation. It's not quite as tight as it looks because of the way I've drawn this figure. But it gives you a relationship between luminosity and all these structural parameters, including the radius or the size of the galaxy. Okay, so that gives you an idea of what the galaxies, their typical galaxy looks like and how their properties depend on on the luminosity or the mass. So now I'm going to tackle this question, what's a normal galaxy and what's an extreme galaxy? And down here in the lower left, there's a movie running. I pulled this off of YouTube, actually. But I think it does a nice job of illustrating how galaxies come in a range of sizes and shapes. Incidentally, that the first galaxy in this animation, the little round one there, that was, that's the current record holder for the smallest galaxy known. That was discovered in the ACS survey of Virgo that I showed in the very early on in the slide. So Hubble pointed at a field in Virgo and it was subsequently discovered to contain this very, very compact or ultra compact galaxy. So but to get to the question of what's normal and what's extreme, you can see up in the upper left corner here, this is a picture of Andromeda. We've all seen this many, many times. And you can see M thirty-two, a companion and another dwarf elliptical galaxy as well. And they cover, you know, three galaxies covering the range in size, luminosity and surface brightness. Now, I want to go back in history a bit to the nineteen seventies. And at that time, there was some astronomers who were saying, well, you know, astronomy is often, is a science that's dictated by how good your observations are. In other words, you can be incomplete. You're, there's, you think you've found all possible types of galaxies, but you could be wrong. There could be a very low surface brightness population of galaxies that eluded detection, just because they're so faint, they're very difficult to detect against the sky. And in fact, a number of years ago, a few years ago, astronomers, here's one such example, started to discover a class of galaxy that they termed ultra diffuse. So this is a galaxy, it's not, of course, not in the direction of Andromeda. But what I've done is I've taken the image of this galaxy, an ultra diffuse galaxy, which has the luminosity of one of those dwarf galaxies, but it's spread over an enormous area. And there, and I've moved this so it appears as it would if we're at the distance of Andromeda or these other three galaxies. And so the light is now dispute dispersed over a very large area. The galaxy is very low surface brightness. And it looks rather different than the other three types of galaxies. So this seems to suggest that, you know, this astronomer Disney was at least partially right in that galaxies like this, these extreme, very diffuse galaxies may be more common than we thought. Now, just to get technical for a minute, I would like to sort of point out there are problems in detecting extreme galaxies. And here's a plot, which I've just added in the upper right hand corner, which is plotting luminosity. And here's a plot, which I've just added in the upper right hand corner, which is plotting luminosity. Here luminosity is increasing to the left uh against galaxy size, which is increasing upwards. And this is a plot that was made by um astronomers who were studying the Virgo cluster um back in the nineteen eighties using photographic plates. And so they had a handful of galaxies, all the galaxies they could detect were shown as these points. And they saw that the galaxies fell along this thin sequence, much as we just saw with the the latest data from the NGVS. And at the extreme uh low luminosities on the right, you can see there's a small population of galaxies in the Milky Way to sort of give you an idea that the trend continues. Now, if you want to find extreme galaxies, outliers, which are very, very small or very large and diffuse, there are technical problems, there's challenges, right? The first one is, in that region that I just indicated with the the or the yellow band, if a galaxy falls in that region, so these are galaxies with very small sizes, then you can see there's a problem because that is actually close to the the size of a star as seen in ground based images. So in other words, very small galaxies at the distance of Virgo would be unresolved. You would confuse them with stars. So that's one challenge. The second challenge is if you want to find things like that ultra diffuse galaxy, then in that case, they're very large um for their luminosity. But that means that they they fall in this wedge over on the extreme right hand part of the diagram. So those galaxies are indeed invisible, according to what Disney said back in nineteen seventy-six because they're so low surface brightness that they're impossible to detect. So this is where the NGVS survey comes in because it's it's quite useful because it's deeper, it has good image quality. So you can find the very small things and it's it's uh sensitive to low surface brightness features too. So this is the same plot that I showed a moment ago, which is the basically um and only, there's two two panels here, only focus on the panel on the left, the larger of the two panels. This is a plot of luminosity in the vertical axis against surface brightness, so the amount of light per unit area. And because I've stretched the scale, you can see that it looks a little bit different. It doesn't look like the very thin ribbon that I showed you earlier. Um, because I want to sort of enhance all this, as much spread as possible, so you can sort of pick out the features in this diagram. But you can see that the normal galaxies uh are the things that are written, uh I've plotted in red and in gold. So these are the population of normal galaxies in the Virgo cluster. This is looking right down the center of Virgo. It's a small area in the center of Virgo. And so that that smooth curve and the dash curves sort of uh delineate the main sequence, so to speak, of galaxies in Virgo. For a galaxy of any luminosity, you can read off the plot, what's the typical surface brightness? But then you can see that there are also outliers in this diagram. So in blue, I'm showing you things that at a fixed luminosity have very, very low surface brightness. So these are ultra diffuse, like the galaxy I plotted a moment ago. So these are outliers and they're extreme. On the other hand, if you look at the other um side of this diagram, the points in green are not so different in terms of their luminosity, but you can see they're ten uh ten thousand, a hundred thousand times higher in this their surface brightness, which means they're much smaller. So they're high surface brightness outliers. And in fact, there's even a population of galaxies shown in magenta there. Uh, these are the ultra compact dwarf galaxies and these are the things that are very easy to mistake for stars if you see them, um if you look on ground based images that don't have excellent image quality. So um this gives us a way to identify these extreme galaxies. And here's a visualization of what they look like. So this is a picture. Um, the large picture is showing you um an image of the Virgo cluster. This is just a portion of Virgo, but it's at a a magnification where you can see uh a number of the very bright Messier galaxies, the giant elliptical galaxies, M sixty, M fifty-nine, M eighty-seven, which is right at the heart of Virgo, M eighty-six, M eighty-four. So th- this is a wide field view of the Virgo cluster. And then if you zoom in, uh as I've done on the lower example, you can see in the crosshairs, there's an ultra compact galaxy. Believe it or not, that's not a star, that's a uh ultra compact galaxy in Virgo. It's been confirmed spectroscopically. Um, and at the same time, if you look up, you can see an ultra diffuse galaxy. These are on the same spatial scale, so it gives you an idea of the difference, even though the luminosity of these two systems isn't that different. You can see there's an enormous range uh in their sizes. Now, if you look carefully at these ultra diffuse galaxies, here's a collection of twenty-four of them that we found, you can see there's some peculiarities in their appearance. So if you look at the first one, uh it really looks like there's a, it's almost uh flat and linear. And then there's a knot of high surface brightness at the center. Uh, galaxy number thirteen as well, I wish I had the most here. Uh, galaxy thirteen is another example, a very flattened system. Uh, those are very likely galaxies in which there was a normal galaxy has been shredded by tides, much as we saw in the simulations earlier. And there's a few other examples, like uh let's see, number nine and ten are good examples. Whereas if you look, they have very peculiar morphologies, they're quite irregular. In fact, that kind of appearance usually seen in galaxies where there's been a merger. And this is um very likely, these are very likely to be post merger remnants. So um there there's been a collision perhaps of two dwarf galaxies, which have made of another dwarf galaxy with very low surface brightness. So this is um, it's quite interesting. It was a bit of a surprise because um, you know, the origins of these systems not entirely clear, but this would suggest that at least some of these galaxies and perhaps most of them are forming through tidal encounters, being shredded or collisions, something like that, something related to the dynamic environment of the cluster. Now, if we go to the other extreme and zero in on those ultra compact dwarf galaxies, um, you can see that um here's the figure at the upper left. Um, there's, the green circles are showing three of these galaxies, which are almost star like um in one uh single field. Now, this is quite interesting because um a a number of years ago, in two thousand fourteen, some astronomers used the Gemini telescope to look at one of these objects. And Gemini has um an instrument NIFs, which uses adaptive optics. And that means that with a laser system and a guide star, you can actually compensate for the blurring of the Earth's atmosphere and almost achieve the same kind of resolution you can get from space. So if you look uh on the lower left, there's four panels here. Look at the ones um, see panels B and D, if you can read that. These are um views at a very small scale. You can see this is only two arc seconds on a side, each one of these. So it's a very, very fine, narrow field of view, view at one of these ultra compact uh dwarf galaxies. And in the upper, and it the the pixels here are color coded by velocity dispersion, how fast the stars are moving in that region of the galaxy. And you can see it's mostly blue, so look at the the panel B to start with. Um, that is the data. This is what you observe when you look through the telescope. You can see blue pixels everywhere and then a bright red spot at the center, which is indicating that the stars in the center of this very small, very tiny object are moving extremely rapidly. To reproduce that kind of increase inverse, the velocity dispersion at the center, uh the team suggested that the galaxy, you needed to add a central mass concentration. In other words, a supermassive black hole of twenty million solar masses to explain those data. That was a big surprise because what that suggests is that this supermassive black hole is something like fifteen percent of the total mass of the galaxy, which is unheard of. Normally, um it's much, much smaller fraction than that. So that's that's intriguing because how do you get such a massive uh black hole in such a small, low mass galaxy? Well, if you look on the left, on the right here, um from our NGVS imaging, you can make an inventory of these ultra compact dwarfs, these UCDs. And if you, they're, they come in, there's sort of a continuum in that many of the UCDs just appear as point sources. But there's some that appear to have a diffuse envelope. And in fact, you can arrange these in a sequence so that as um the envelope, which is prominent in some of these galaxies, disappears as you go to other galaxies. Then if a UCD appears with a very diffuse envelope, we would in fact call it the nucleus of a dwarf elliptical galaxy. So this is interesting because it suggests that perhaps some of these UCDs originated as the nucleus of a brighter galaxy, which was then uh had its its envelope swept away by tides. And that would make uh sense for explaining this uh apparent detection of a supermassive black hole in this object because originally the supermassive black hole was part of a much larger galaxy. So that's interesting now. So the the picture to to the interesting picture to come out of this is that at both extremes, the very diffuse or the very compact, it seems like uh those galaxies are relics of interactions in a rich cluster environment. Okay, so I want to look ahead, close by looking ahead, just take a few minutes here to say, you know, what what's the future? We already heard in the the video a moment ago, um that something big is on the horizon here. We're in December twenty-second, very soon now, it's almost hard to believe that James Webb Space Telescope is going to be launched. And uh that's NASA led mission, but it's with the participation of the European Space Agency and I'm proud to say Canada through the Canadian Space Agency. And Canada produced among one of the instruments, but also the guidance system for the telescope. So we have a very important role to play in this project. Okay, um for studying uh for certain kinds of pro- uh problems in astronomy, James Webb is going to be really transformational. Unlike Hubble, Hubble uh focuses on the ultraviolet, visible and a bit of the near infrared. Uh, James Webb focuses more on the infrared and a little bit into the the red optical part of the spectrum. And you can see in this animation that although um the telescopes are not terribly different in total size, uh the mirror for a web is much, much larger. And this means it's more sensitive and um it's uh very well suited with its um good angular resolution for looking for supermassive black holes. And so um the way this works is the astronomers apply for time at NASA um and the other agencies put out a call for proposals, you apply for time. And I'm happy to say that we had a program led by a postdoc here at um at NRC, Matt Taylor, um whose proposal was accepted. And this is to use the this spectrograph, the near infrared spectrograph on James Webb to look um at many of these compact systems, including the nuclei of dwarf galaxies and these ultra compact dwarfs to see, are these objects actually, is it common to find supermassive black holes in these in these galaxies? Because if so, that's telling us that probably these tidal effects have been very important. So that's uh very excited. We're hoping for a good launch and smooth operations. By the way, Matt um is moving to Calgary to start a professorship there in um in January. So maybe by the end of next year, you may want to have have him come and visit and uh give you a talk or an update on this program. And then finally, um I wanted to squeeze in a word or two about Castor. So these telescopes, Webb, um Hubble, et cetera, it takes many, many years to plan and uh and build such facilities, so it's a long term exercise. And Canada plans its long term facilities, long term plans for its astronomy facilities through this exercise called the Long Range Plan for Canadian Astronomy. It does these once per decade. Um, back in two thousand and ten, uh the recommendation in space astronomy was that Canada should investigate um uh so either join a Giza led mission or a NASA led mission or possibly can look into leading a mission of its own, Canadian Space Telescope, that would sort of complement the next generation of facilities. So this project, Castor, is the project that I've been working on uh since then. And it's basically, you can think of it as a Hubble successor um for the um UV in the blue optical region. And the most recent long range plan in two thousand twenty uh endorsed this as the highest priority for space astronomy in Canada for this decade. So a number of studies are underway at the CSA. Um, I won't go into the details here, but you can see in the plot on the left, um Castor is um sort of at the the short wavelength end of this UV optical infrared range. Um, and it complements James Webb, which is really focused on the infrared and also uh two more missions, Euclid and Roman, which are um European and American missions, which are going to launch later in this decade as well. So Castor, it's a smaller telescope than Hubble, one meter versus two point four meter. Um, but it it has a, it's gained, the image quality is very similar to Hubble and it has an enormous gain in the field of view. And if you look on the right, you can see the tiny field of view of Hubble compared to the very large field of Castor. So this kind of facility will be very useful for probing galaxies in the nearby universe uh to look for unusual galaxies, extreme galaxies, things like these compact dwarfs. Um, they're very difficult to find, you need to cover large areas and have good resolution to find them. And Castor would be able to do that. Okay, so I'm probably out of time, I'm on time, and I'd be very happy to take questions uh now, if anyone has any.
Thank you so much. And um Warren has a question. Why don't you just ask it out loud, Warren?
Sure, great presentation, Patrick, very, very informative and very interesting. Thanks for uh taking the time to uh present to us. Um, I had a question um as to whether any of the uh new uh galaxy survey data that you were talking about, has it been uh any of it been used or are there plans to use any of it to potentially look at the validity of some of the entropic gravity theories that are out there?
Um, to my knowledge, so you're talking specifically of like the Virgo cluster?
Oh, sure, Virgo or any of the other ones, you mentioned some other data, um, yeah.
Yeah, um, to my knowledge, the the data has not been used for that purpose. I mean, it's been used and I I sort of lost count of the number of published papers, we're like forty something papers, but that has not been one of them. If it's a gravity paper, presumably you need spectroscopy to look at the dynamics, is that right?
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I mean, Virgo is a perfect environment for studying gravity on cluster scales. I think it's a tremendously interesting um project. And there is, you know, one of the the ways in which um the cosmological models have suffered problems on small spatial scales. Some astronomers would argue that this is telling us that there's something wrong with gravity on the scales of galaxies and clusters. Um, so that's certainly something that's worth looking into. I think you, what the the current limitation is, you need the 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 dynamical, the kinematic information to to study the gravity. And there are facilities that are being planned for the future. Um, in fact, there's one proposal to upgrade CFHD into a totally entirely new telescope that only does spectroscopy over wide fields. And it would be perfect for measuring velocities of many things in Virgo to understand the kinematics and the dynamics and gravity on that scale.
Right, good, thanks very much.
I um I missed uh that Andy Hanks had a question. Uh, did you, Andy, did you want to go back to that slide?
Sure, I think it's slide number twenty or nineteen possibly.
This guy?
Up one.
This one?
Right, so I was imagining that the numbers on the spectrum legend had to do with magnitude, but I guess those numbers are actually no, actually, it's supposed to be spectrum, or sorry, it's supposed to be absolute magnitude, right?
It is absolute magnitude, yeah. So it's absolute magnitude in the G band, so at the very bottom, it's minus twenty-two and a half, and at the very top, it's minus seven and a half.
Okay, um, is that different than the traditional absolute magnitude that a amateur astronomer would see on their charts?
No, it's it's the same. The only difference is it's measured in the G band.
Okay, so the newer uh, a second set of arrows appeared shortly after for a a different survey with a different completeness.
Right, okay, I'll bring those up. These ones.
Yep.
Great.
There they are. So that would be more visible or brighter.
These are fainter, so the things in red are minus seven point five. Um, so there there are a million times fainter than the brightest things in this galaxy, in this this diagram. So galaxy like a bright messy object, um, you know, if we take that as the reference, then the things plotted in red here are about a million or three million times fainter, very faintest things.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
One of the things I was wondering is JWST's ability to see infrared, is that at all helpful for seeing deeper into something like the Virgo Cluster? Or you, or is that not really how you would use such an instrument?
That's a good question. In our particular case, so in so infrared can be valuable for studying very extincted objects where there's plenty of dust, for instance.
Okay.
And so for some galaxies that you see in this plot, like the spiral galaxies, that can be important because they have quite a large amounts of dust. So for those objects, then yes, looking in the near infrared or potentially even the mid infrared with JWST could be helpful. But for the most part, the cluster is not heavily extincted. It's also at high galactic latitude where dust is fairly minor. So it's, you know, in our case, we're using the telescope as a stellar populations and kinematics machine. And we could easily have done these these observant, these proposed observations. We could have carried them out into the in the optical rather than the infrared. In our case, we just chose the important thing was the resolution and the sensitivity. And Webb has both of those. We could have moved in the into the the optical. And in fact, there may even have been some reasons to prefer that, but there's no sensitivity in the optical with Webb. So we had to rely on infrared observations. But, you know, for instance, the the Gemini observations were made in the red optical. Actually, they were also in the near infrared. But yeah, there's is if you had the image quality and the collecting area of the telescope, there's nothing to stop you from doing these observations in the optical, the blue optical, or even the UV interior.
Martin has a comment about edges. Did you want to comment about that, Martin?
Thank you. Interesting talk. And the Virgo Cluster is a pretty interesting place. But I just find that the edges on this diagram look a little sharper than I would have expected, like I would have expected a kind of a smooth fall off. And I'm wondering if where you look feeds back into where the edges are, or if you
Yes.
the lower right there, for example, would and went deep, would you find more Virgo cluster members?
Oh, yes, absolutely. It's a good question. So you see here in this diagram, you can see so that the blue circles, so Virgo is kind of, there are two main, it's it's an irregular cluster, right? It's not not relaxed in astronomical parlance. It's not spherical. It's a bit lumpy. There's a southern cluster which is centered on N49. And then there's the main body of the cluster, which is centered on N87. Those blue circles I've drawn are sort of the it's one measure of the radius, the outermost extent of the of the cluster. But there's no sharp boundary there. What is what's causing the sharp boundary in those diagrams that you saw a moment ago is that it's the outline of the footprint of the the survey. So the red, the the boundary is defined by the red squares, which are the CFHD pointings. So indeed, we know from, for instance, from those early photographic surveys that covered this whole area in this diagram, they went a bit further. And indeed, there are other galaxies out beyond that region. So if we had gone out, you indeed, you would have seen that there's there's a more gradual drop off.
Okay.
It's just a selection effect.
Right. Okay, thanks. That's what I was thinking. Can you just remind me, I think there's an anomaly in the Hubble flow that Virgo was used a lot for getting redshifts and distances, but it's not a good idea because its influence on us is strong and it's kind of distorted, as you said. Could you comment on that just to refresh me on that?
Yes. So you have this over density in Virgo. So in a normal Hubble flow, right, as you move increasing look in some at some random position on the sky and you map out the velocities, the recession velocities of galaxies. It should in fact be a relatively tight relation that the recession, the velocity gets larger as you go farther away. In actual fact, there's peculiar motions of galaxies. In other words, they aren't perfectly participating in this Hubble flow and the galaxies have random motion superimposed on this Hubble flow. So there's a bit of scatter in it. The problem with what happens in the direction of Virgo is the density is significant enough, as if you look through Virgo, the gravitational attraction of the cluster itself perturbs the Hubble flow. So the galaxies, which would be on the far side, are experiencing attraction into Virgo, and so it perturbs their recession velocities.
Very much.
Kent, you had a question.
Yeah. It you, you, thanks for the talk, by the way. I really appreciate it. My my question is about what the else the interaction might do. For example, if you've got a smaller galaxy that's had a lot of matter stripped away from it by an interaction with a a larger galaxy, or for example, if it's from moving through the gas in the intergalactic medium. What change does that do to the structure of the galaxy? Could it change from being a like a part spiral to being a much flatter structure?
Yeah. So suppose you start off with a barred spiral. So there's a number of things that could happen. Ram pressure stripping could remove the gas, right? So and that's going to, you know, once the gas is gone, then there's going to be no ongoing star formation. So the the stars that are currently in the galaxy will be the the last new generation of stars, and the galaxy will then just passively evolve and get faint and red and more regular, smooth distribution. You could also have tidal effects where you sort of strip away the extreme periphery of the galaxy, and that's going to change the structure of the galaxy, and that will make it look less like a spiral galaxy itself. You could also have this harassment process where depending on the mass of the galaxy, repeated encounters with other members can sort of heat the galaxy and transform it in that way. So yes, I mean, these processes, if left, you know, depending on the environment, then depending when, at what time they happened and how much after the encounters you're observing the galaxy, indeed, they can change the appearance of the galaxy. We saw an example, right, of of two galaxies that looked like just smooth, the regular galaxies, smooth elliptical galaxies, but in fact, those were transformed spirals.
Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Patrick. That was a fantastic presentation. I learned so much. And I'm sure everybody else at the center learned a great deal as well. And frankly, as an astro imager, it makes me want to run out and photograph the Virgo Cluster tomorrow. So.
Well, my pleasure. Thank you.
So I really, really do appreciate it. Let's everybody, let's give them a round of applause, shall we?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to pull you back from the Virgo Cluster to a much more mundane pursuit at this point. And that is to review and approve a money motion. And I'm going to turn it over to Luca to introduce the motion. I will say that I did provide the requisite notice to the members on November 14th of this motion. Since it's greater than $500, we have to get co approval from council and from the membership. So Luca, I will, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Tom. Well, you basically laid it out. I was just going to summarize that. For people that don't remember the notice that back in September, one of our members, Robert Drew approached the Black Nugget Lake Observatory Committee with a generous donation to assist in the completion of the 32 inch telescope out at BNLO. And so together with Bob and the executive and the BNLO committee, we drafted a terms of reference for a deed of gift, which was formally presented at the October 25th, the council meeting. And council accepted the donation and the deed of gift was approved. And so we've actually received the deed of gift and it's sitting in our the actual donation has been received and it's sitting in our general account. But because the the amount of money involved is over the the council spending limit, we need, just like we did for the other donations to this project, when we've got grants and other donations, we need to have membership approval in order to be able to spend the received money. And so I move on behalf of the committee that the center may spend up to $25,000 from the general account in accordance with the terms of the Robert Drew deed of gift.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I second that, Warren, kindly.
Okay, Warren can second. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Carried. Thanks very much, Luca. Appreciate it. And again, thank you, Bob Drew. All right, we're going to go back out into space now. And I'm going to see if I can find Abder. Where are you, Abder? There you are.
Right here.
I'll make you a co host. And we will carry on with Astro Imaging Corner. So Abder, over to you.
Thank you very much, Tom. Okay, I'm just going to share my screen. Okay, here we go. Does everyone see that?
We're seeing, there we go.
Yep. Okay, perfect. Okay, so welcome to AstroImaging Corner number 115. Let me just double check that. I believe it is 115. Yep. Okay, so we got quite a few images today. And it looks like the amateur astronomers that are at RSC Edmonton have been very, very busy lately, which is awesome and nice to see. Our first image of the night is from Alan Hobbs, and this is the California Nebula in GC1499. And this was shot at Black Nugget Lake Observatory on November 2nd and 3rd. And this was a combination of 60, 60 second subs, so a total of one hour of integration time. And this was with Alan's Rasa 8 and the ASI 2600 MC camera. And Alan was using an opt long L enhanced filter on his Skywatcher E6R mount. And the processing was was all done in PixInsight and Photoshop. So great shot, Alan. Our next submission is from Arnold Rivera. This is Comet Leonard and M3, the Globular Cluster. I'll see if I can play the video in here. Otherwise, I'll have to turn it on separately. Okay, I'll just hold the video on separately. Hopefully, we can see that. Okay, can everyone see that video?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So yeah, that is Comet Leonard within with Messier 3. You can see some very, very sharp detail in M3. Thousands of stars visible there, and you can see how quickly the comet's moving. And Arnold took this with his Rasa 8 and the ASI 294 camera. And this was, I believe, a combination of 60 second exposures over about a two hour period, but ended up taking out about about half an hour out of that. So very, very nice compilation. Okay, and this is a shot of the recent lunar eclipse from Arnold. And Arnold said that he decided to image the partial eclipse from his backyard as the entire eclipse was visible despite the potentially poor seeing conditions while imaging over the neighbors rooftops and chimneys. So very nice shot. And our next shot is from Dave Muscle. This is the California Nebula. That full screen. So this is the California Nebula. And it's a large dim nebula, about 100 light years long and about 1,000 light years away. And it can be found about halfway between Merifac, the bright star in Perseus, and the Pleiades open cluster. And this picture was made by combining data from 44 minute subframes taken with the X-Force Scientific 127 ED and using a QHY 163 color camera. And Dave was using an opt long L enhanced filter on that as well. And the processing was all done in PixInsight. Great shot, Dave. And this next shot is from Yusuf Hussein. This is an image that Yusuf took of of the eclipse and the Pleiades star cluster together in a single image. And this was captured using a Canon 7D Mark II camera and with the Canon 70 to 200 millimeter F 2.8 lens. And Yusuf was shooting at 135 millimeters to get the optimal fit for the moon and the Pleiades in this image. And this was at F8 and ISO 200. And this was a combination of of 120 10 second images to get the Pleiades star cluster. And the moon was was basically, you know, taken as a separate image and then placed in there to to get maximum dynamic range. And so Yusuf said that one small section of the image is a single 10 second image while the rest is a stacked set. So the Pleiades star cluster is 20 minutes of data while the moon is 10 seconds. And all the stacking was done in Deep Sky Stacker and the processing was in Photoshop and Topaz D Noise AI. And this is a close up of that from Yusuf. And this one was done with a Skywatcher Spirit 120 ED telescope and with the full frame ASI 6200mm camera. And Yusuf said that each color is RGB color frame. There were 10 of those and each of them were one second long. And the main difference in stacking was that Yusuf used PixInsight this time instead of Deep Sky Stacker. And the final processing was done in Photoshop as usual. The very, very nice colors. And our next image here is from Ray. And this is the Horsehead Nebula. It's the most recent image of the Horsehead Nebula that Ray took. And this was a combination of nine 10 minute frames with the with 132 millimeter ABO refractor and the full frame QHY 367 camera. And this was processed in APP and Lightroom. And up next. There we go. We have another shot from Ray. This is Comet Leonard with the Globular Cluster M3. And this was taken at about 6:00 AM at at Black Lake staging area on December 3rd with an 81 millimeter refractor and the QHY 268 camera at Unity Game. And this was a stack of 10 exposures, and each of them were 60 seconds long, and it was processed in APP and Lightroom. And Ray said that this was a milestone for him because this was the first image that he had processed in APP. So did an awesome job there, very, very nice dynamic range and processing. And up next, this is the eclipse from Ray, and this was taken without a telescope. This was with a telephoto camera lens. And this was with the Canon 72, 70 to 200 millimeter lens at 200 millimeters F4. And this was a single quarter second exposure. So very nice. And then this is from Ray as well. This is a wider field showing the Pleiades star cluster as well, along with the eclipsed moon. And up next, we have a video of the November Aurora from Josephine's security camera. So we'll see if we can play that here. I'll put that up in a separate window as well. And that is right here. Okay, hopefully that is visible to everyone.
It is.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so this is, I believe it's about, yeah, about two minutes long. So we'll just skip ahead a tiny bit right there. So you can see the aurora visible from the suburbs. That was quite an aurora storm. And it's intensifying pretty quickly. And this was with a pretty, pretty basic Maize 3 security camera between about midnight and 5:30 AM. So basically, the entire night was compressed into three minutes in total. But that was that was quite some intense display. But that was, that was quite some intense display. So we'll fast forward a tiny bit. There we go. So quite a bit of structure in that, uh, Aurora storm. And I still, I still remember the fluttering. It just, it felt like the Aurora were, were fluttering to music or something. It's quite, uh, quite something. Then, oh yeah, it came back later on in the night. You can see some satellites going by as well. Oh, that's a good one. And now it's morning time and the sun's coming up. So very nice. So thank you for sharing that, Josephine. And we've got one more as well from Josephine. Oh, I can figure it out. Oh, there we go. So we have, uh, another one from Josephine. And this was, uh, meteorite that Josephine actually caught, or I guess a meteor at that time. Um, there we, yeah, there we go. You can just see it just explode right there. Uh, also from Josephine's security cam. Let's play it one more time. That is a very, very nice capture. Okay, we'll go back here. Oh, okay. So our next image. Uh, there we go. So this one's from Alistair Lane. And, uh, so this is actually just a single image from Alistair's camera. And Alistair says that it shows more truthfully the amount of twilight that you can process out of an image later, as we'll see in the next image. And this is Comet Leonard right near the bottom part of, uh, of the image here. You can see the bright green nucleus, but you can't see much detail in the tail. Uh, and if we go to the next image, this is the same image, but it's been processed to remove some of that sky glow and that twilight glow. And you can see a very, very nice tail spreading out from there. Uh, so it just shows how much you can improve an image, uh, with some careful processing. And this was with Alistair's Canon five D and the Ascar forty-millimeter F four-point-five lens, uh, and at a focal length of a hundred and eighty millimeters. And this was a total of, uh, twelve minutes of, uh, total exposures. And this is from Rick Bram. Uh, Rick said that he took this from his backyard in Edmonton. And he was using a Canon five D Mark IV, uh, camera at ISO sixty-four hundred. And this, uh, the shutter speed was one quarter of a second. And Rick was using his Teleview NP one oh one IS, uh, scope with a Forex power, uh, Teleview Powermate. And five subs in total were aligned, stacked and processed using Adobe Photoshop. And the next shot is from Tom Owen. Uh, this is, uh, the Tadpoles NGC one eight nine three. Uh, in the embedded open cluster NGC, uh, one eight nine threes is invisible in the center there. Um, and it's, it's known for the two tadpoles. Those are those two bright streamers of gas, uh, near the center that you can see coming out there. And each of them are about ten light years long and they're believed to be star-forming regions. Uh, and the, uh, nebula is located in the constellation of Auriga. And Tom said he imaged this on Remembrance Day and again on December second at Pigeon Lake. And Tom was using a Takahashi FS one oh two refractor at F six. Uh, so he cropped the image a little bit and, uh, Tom was using the QSI six eighty-three CCD camera. And, uh, each of the sub-exposures was six minutes long and Tom used seventeen of them each in hydrogen alpha and oxygen and thirty-five, uh, six-minute subs in sulfur for a total of, it's total exposure of six hours and fifty-four minutes. And the subs were stacked in, uh, APP and processed using Star Tools. So very nice image and very nice processing, Tom. And, uh, next is one of my images. I didn't really get much of a chance to, to combine anything into a color. Uh, and the moon was up recently, so all I managed to get was a black and white shot of the Heart Nebula. And this was, uh, about twenty-five minutes of data with the, uh, C eleven edge at F two using Hyperstar. And I was using my ASI sixteen hundred mono camera. And, uh, I hope to get some colored data later and combine it as well. This was more the test for the stars in the corners. And this was from last night. Um, so the moon was about three-quarter full. So my color data didn't turn out so well, so I just processed my hydrogen alpha frame. So this is a single frame of about two and a half hours of H alpha subs and each sub was five minutes long. And, uh, this was also with the C eleven at GHD at F two with the Hyperstar. And that's all for today. So a huge thank you to everyone who sent us some images. And, uh, thank you very much for, for, uh, participating. And I'll turn it back to you, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you, Abder. I think the headphone nebula should be called the Millennial Nebula myself, but. Um, so that's great. Uh, well, so this leads us now to the, uh, the announcements part of the, uh, of the program. And I, I have a couple. Um, one is that, uh, the next meeting in January tenth is going to be a members' night. This will be after the AGM. So, uh, if, uh, if any of you have presentations that you would like to make, uh, this will be your opportunity to do it. So it'll be after the AGM. We'll have a members' meeting. And we're also going to be doing more money motions, uh, this time to accommodate those aspects of the budget that are, uh, requiring coapproval from council and, uh, and the members. And I'm just going to quickly share what those are going to be. I don't know if you can see them. So those are, there's going to be a whole slew of them, as you can see. But I've sent out the notice, the required notice by mail, email today. And I thought I would take the opportunity to, uh, to give you this notices to the members as part of this meeting as well. All right. Are, are there any other, uh, any other announcements? Alistair, anything?
Uh, thank you, Tom. Yes, um, just a, um, well, a broad scale, um, please be patient. Uh, apologies for, uh, your various calendar or um, other astro gear from the National Office of the RASC. Uh, they are, uh, literally in the middle of, uh, moving location from one building to another. So, uh, the staff is all hands on deck, moving and very little on answering telephones or queries. Um, and also to note that, like, just about every other entity, um, on the planet, there are supply chain issues. So the printers have been, uh, well, slow to print stuff and the, uh, the, there's, um, a lot of, um, slowdowns because of, um, uh, employment issues on the distribution side of things. So I only just got my Observer's Handbook twenty twenty-two. Um, just, uh, uh, I think it was Friday or Thursday. Um, and so it's, please be patient. Stuff's coming, but, uh, we'll see.
So thanks, Alistair. I think, uh, uh, Orla was trying to change or find it, what, what his password was. And I think he was having difficulty getting ahold of, of someone as well too, for those kinds of, those kinds of tasks as well. So thanks for giving that some context. All right, um, are there any other, uh, any other announcements?
Uh, just, uh, Tom, just a reminder that, uh, uh, the Astro Imaging Community Cafe is on December fifteenth, so on Wednesday. So just a reminder.
That's right. And, uh, yours truly is going to be making one of the presentations on, um, as a software program called Sky Tools for Imaging. And, uh, it, it helps take the guesswork out of things like, well, how many, how many exposures do I need to capture this object properly? And what, what length of exposures do I need? And uh, so forth and so on. And so, uh, I, I look forward to, um, to, uh, to enlightening people about that. It has a whole bunch of other uh, uh, aspects to it, which I'm not going to get into. But those kinds of things I think would be of interest to just about anybody who's ever wanted to take a photograph. So.
Oh, Tom.
Um, yes.
I have, uh, two other presenters, so, uh, you'll be the first one to present on Wednesday. But I think I have three people lined up for the meeting, so I think we'll be, uh, we'll be okay.
Oh, great. That's good to know. I think Jay is going to join us, uh, as a presenter. I'm not sure who the other person is.
Uh, Rick Bram.
Oh, great, great.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
So far, I'm, I'm open to having another presenter. So, uh, anybody else who, uh, would like to present, uh, just, uh, uh, sign up on the signup form.
You might have to volunteer somebody. I don't know.
I've been pressing some rubber arms lately, but, uh, hopefully.
All right, sounds good. Well, listen, this was a great meeting. Uh, thank you again to Patrick Cote for a really great presentation. Um, and yeah, let's give him a round of applause. Thank you to everybody for, for attending. And, uh, clear skies, everyone. We'll see you next month.
For sure. Cheers. Have a good night.
Good night.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy Festivus.
Is that a Roman holiday, Festivus?
Festivus. Oh, I got my hat, so, you know.
Uh, there you go.